Okay, now it's a happy day for me. Okay, good morning. It's Wednesday, September 6th at 10:00 AM. And this is the County Board of Commissioners meeting, which I will call the order. All three commissioners are here this morning, so we do have a oral forum. First up today is recognition of our existing employees, so recognizing employees in five-year increments. So I'm going to call your name, then Councilor New, and I think Administrator Johnson has your certificate and your pin for you. Let them get it. If you're not here, maybe someone from your department can draw it for you and get it back to you. So Abigail Dorsey, the County Sheriff's Office, 25 years of service. Patty Coopers, Parks Office, 15 years of service. No, not here. Amy South, first up is 10 years of service. Carly Wilson, HHS, 10 years of service. Lori Dora, thank you, HHS, five years of service. Melissa McDonald, Parks Office, five years of service. No, it's good.
I don't think that too.
And now Derek Ford, five years of service.
receiving the award.
Put you in a picture.
What, to the rabbits?
Okay, okay.
Operator here.
Hey, now moving on to our new hires for August. Always exciting to see new positions we have that are finally filled. Come on up and introduce yourself for the record, starting hires.
For the record, my name is Tiana Opadere, Human Resources Assistant for Lincoln County. I am going to go ahead and list our new hires who are not able to join us today. So we have Jessica Dean and Shelley Elderson as transit drivers within our Transit Department. And then we also have Eric Kemp, who is a park attendant over at our Moonshine Park. And then we have one here joining us in person.
Hello, my name is Orin Wallace, and I'm the new detective at the DA's office.
Yeah, thank you for being here. Okay, and great seeing everybody, and you don't have to wait for five years to come back and see us again. We are available anytime. All right, next up is Proclaimations. We actually have two proclaimations. First naming September 2023 as National Recovery and Well Variety Month, but I think Commissioner Hall wanted to read that one.
Yes, thank you.
So she is reading it. I'm not sure who is presenting on that, but you can kind of make your way up as Commissioner Hall is reading.
In the matter of proclaiming September 2023 as National Recovery and Well Variety Month in Lincoln County, whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, whereas prevention of mental and/or substance use disorders works. Treatment is effective and people recover in our area and around the nation. And whereas preventing and overcoming mental and/or substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the science of the problem, and guide those to need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. Whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery and learn how recovery positively benefits well-being. Prevention coalitions of Lincoln County, together with the SLETS Truck, Lincoln County Health and Human Services, Reconnections Counseling, Phoenix Wellness Centers, and other organizations are sponsoring events to celebrate recovery and well variety during the 34th Annual 2023 National Recovery Month, including the 15th Annual Lincoln County Hands Across the Bridge Event on Saturday, September 16th at noon in Walport. Assembly begins 11:30 AM at the Walport Heritage Museum Talking Lot, 620 Northwest Spring, Walport. A recovery well variety celebration will follow the bridge event from 12:30 to 2:30 at the Walport Community Center, featuring speakers, music, food, activities, and more. Now therefore, the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim September 2023 as National Recovery and Well Variety Month in Lincoln County to demonstrate our continued support and commitment to substance use prevention, treatment, and recovery, and to encourage individuals and communities throughout the county to celebrate recovery, spread the word, and support these communities.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Introduce yourself for the record. It just seems like right in the microphone.
Right in the microphone.
Asia Richardson, Lincoln County Home and Human Services.
Nicole Rennby, Peaceful and Center.
Jacob Reed, SLETS here about. Well, I was asked to come and talk about well variety and be supportive of other efforts here. Let me get a little closer.
There you go.
I wasn't looking. First, I want to say thank you for continuing the effort to celebrate that this is an important value that we have in our community to help people and to advocate for people on their journey of healing. And that's beneficial to the whole community when people heal, individuals heal. And we get to experience that a lot in the field that I work in. I get to see that people reconnect with their families and being a real service to their communities. And I love that. We honor that and get to meet that journey forward. Well, ready is a, has a lot of roots, and it's a lot more than just the more recent movement that's called well ready. It comes from the idea we are a whole system. We are, we as individuals, we're part of a community internally. We're also, you know, we're part of families, we're part of our environment. So our wellness is important to honor and to work towards. It's about honoring that value that we have towards wellness. So well variety was based on the idea that, you know, when you go into recovery, you still have to do the work of building yourself, finding your purpose, finding your meaning, finding what you want to fight for in this world. So wellness is, it's not a simple thing, right? It's a, it's an intentional effort. And that's what I get to do with some of our groups that are healing. We talk about incorporating those values and what that healing looks like. So I'm happy to be here and I feel like we're celebrating this.
I just wanted to thank you. We so appreciate the commissioners' recognizing and giving our credit to county. One in five Americans is living with a mental illness. Where then half of people living with addiction also have a co-occurring mental illness. So Recovery Month serves as a reminder to people in recovery and those who support them that no one is alone in this journey of recovery. We'd also like to strive to reduce the stigma surrounding substance use disorder and mental health disorders. The more people hear about the success of individuals in recovery, the more it does to reduce the misconceptions that society maintains about addiction. So we'll get an opportunity to do just that at the Hands Across the Bridge event that's happening September 16th. Commissioner Hall mentioned in the proclamation. The gathering begins at 11:30 at the south end of the bridge. And we really look forward to anyone who can make it to come and join in that celebration.
So I'm just super excited to be a part of Hands Across the Bridge this year. I've kind of got soured into it last year by Rick, and it's just been a blessing seeing how all of us get to work together, right? We get to see the joy of people getting life back into their lives. We see people in their very worst, like Jacob was talking about, you know, teaching them to really come back together and figure out who they are and to be able to gain their trust and work through that process with them is an undescribable gift. But with that being said, in the last year, I have watched our community grow together in such a way that it makes my heart so happy to see how we can all work all these individual foundations and have all these outside resources and be able to be like, hey, I need this, and this, and we just all pull together. And it sometimes is one life at a time, sometimes it's multiple, and sometimes they give up. And sometimes we have to deal with losing those people. So that's why I really have a passion for Hands Across the Bridge. I'm super excited to bring back more so what Hands Across the Bridge was I feel originally oriented at was to bring families together. It's a community thing. It's a community support. There are people that might show up that think that it's just to hear an addict talk about their experience, strength, and hope, but it's so much more than that. So I encourage everyone to participate and try to get the word out there and get as many people to show up as possible. We're going to, we're going to make it great this year.
Thank you. All right, anything else?
I just wanted to announce something out. So we're going to be doing the well ready dinner out at September 20th in SLETS Tribal Community Center, 5:30. We're going to be celebrating people in recovery and now we don't. So we'd love people to show up and celebrate. Yeah, then yeah, I also want to echo the Hands Across the Bridge beautiful ceremony and excited to be part of that.
And can you say the date and time of the well ready dinner one more time? I was trying to get it down in the first step.
February 20th, 5:30 PM. Yes, SLETS Tribal Community Center.
All right, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Well, with that in mind, it's time for somebody to make a motion to adopt or proclaim September 2023 as National Recovery and Well Variety Month.
Madam Chair.
All second motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you to our presenters. All right, next up under proclaimations is proclaiming September 2023 as National Suicide Prevention Month. And I think Commissioner Knower may be willing to read that.
Yes, CDU Madam Chair. Proclaiming September 2023 as National Suicide Prevention Month in Lincoln County. Whereas September 2023 is National Suicide Prevention Month. Millions of people around the world join their votes, voices to share message of hope and healing. Whereas in these challenging times, messages of hope and healing are more needed than ever. And whereas every day in Lincoln County, people enter treatment and to behavioral health services and community supports and begin the road to wellness. And whereas resilience begins early in life with families, daycares, and schools, and can be strengthened and reinforced throughout the lifespan. And whereas wellness encompasses the whole individual, including mind, body, spirit, and community. And whereas the benefits of preventing and overcoming mental health challenges, suicide attempts, and loss, and substance abuse are significant and valuable to individuals, families, and our community at large. And whereas it is essential that we educate residents about suicide, mental health, and substance abuse problems and the ways they affect all the people in the community. And whereas we must encourage relatives, friends, coworkers, and providers to recognize the signs of the problem and guide those to appropriate services and supports. And whereas Suicide Prevention Month inspires millions of Americans to raise awareness, build resilience, and find hope. Now therefore, we, the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 as National Suicide Prevention Month, the sixth day of September.
Thank you. Welcome. If you could introduce yourself for the record, can you just put right in the microphone?
That was awkward. I'm Sarah Heard, Lincoln County Public Health.
Chief of Lincoln County Medical Services Hall, so.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
They will help you.
Thank you.
It's a tall people.
It is a tall people. Yeah, thank you for another year of honoring this month and calling recognition to a preventable cause of death that is important, not only in our community, but across the nation. We want to come together every month to remind people to look for the warning signals, to take some steps, ask the question, connect people with support. We see, being in public health, following the data, I see some glimmers of hope with our youth that I wanted to share, because I don't know that we hear that in the anecdotal conversations that we have. Our rates of suicide have remained flat. We have not seen a spike. We've not seen a decline. It's pretty consistent year over year. Where we see numbers start to come down with our most recent Healthy Teen Survey is around youth reporting their desire to attempt suicide. We see a decline for both our eighth graders and our eleventh graders. We see a decline in numbers around attempts that youth are telling us that they're attempting. So my hope for real now is that as we're working towards reducing stigma and saying it's okay to talk about it, that we're starting, we're starting to see some glimmers of hope. And we'll continue to watch this year over year. But we want to encourage all of our community members to look for those things. Are people talking about wanting, wanting to die? Are they making a plan? Are their behaviors changing? Are their situations changing? And then are we talking to them and staying with them and walking through them? And the easiest number to remember to call when somebody's in crisis is 988. That went into effect. It's across the nation. It's here in Oregon. It's easy to remember, just like 911. When somebody's in emotional pain, we can call for help. We can connect them with support to stay with them. So we're working hard across all of our departments and our community to raise awareness. And I thank you for continuing to do that. I'm going to hand it over to Keith this year. Thank you.
Thank you guys again for having us here. And the proclamation, it's always important. We talked about suicide, that we recognize veterans in a overall grouping has higher rate of suicide than the average demographics in this country. So it's one of those things that we're always trying to persuade people, question, or that seek out help, seek out assistance. I know in my position, I quite often give the copies of the death records I get. And it's sad, let's see a veteran death record that says a man or dead was by suicide. I wish there was something I could do to reach out to that person and give them the 988 number or refer them onto it. Couple of things that we've been working on this year is the birthday party, the monthly birthday party at the senior center to have isolated seniors and veterans now see the services that are available for them, meet new friends. We know that social isolation is a detriment to an individual's mental health and a detriment to well, it makes people want to be unlivid again. So we want to make sure that we reach out to them and provide them the resources. Also today, after the meeting, come out and join us. We're going to paint some rocks, a little affirmation on a rock. Sarah and I will hide them around the county. People can find them. And even a little rock that says smile will cause somebody to smile or somebody that says, you know, the sun will rise tomorrow. I remember that 90-second thought process that they're having that they want to hurt themselves will end, and that the sun will rise again tomorrow. And that's an important thing. I bought 120 rocks, but 100 of them are holes. So I have 20 rocks to paint. But it'll be fine. We'll do it out in the courtyard in front. So join us after the meeting, guys.
Okay, great. Welcome to me. Thanks so much. All right, any questions or is someone ready to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to re-proclaim September 2023 as National Suicide Prevention Month in Lincoln County.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to adoption consent calendar. Pretty long one today. These are items of a routine nature, but either staff or commissioners can pull for further information. I also wanted to point out that while this has been going on for a while, you can now go online for an online agenda and actually click on those items and bring them up and look at them, which is a huge improvement to our agenda. It's something that the public has been asking for a while. So can you click on that and just write an example? There we go. So public can now more easily access these rather than having to make a request. As you did previously, you see the document, you can just click on that and it'll become so. They can print it there. They saw the staff who worked on that. Do either commissioners or staff have anything they want to pull, highlight, or discuss?
Oh, nothing for me, but.
Okay.
Nothing for me.
All right, anyone want to make a motion?
I would move to be adopted and sent.
Okay. I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thanks. Now on to decision to action. First item is item A, North Lincoln Sanitation Solid Base Rate Review. And this is a continuation from the item we had during last, you'll see me to this.
Correct, Johnson County Administrator. This is on a franchise agreement, the approval of rate increase as identified by county code for North Lincoln Sanitation Services. In our efforts to review their annual presentation, they identified that they would be requesting a 4.5% rate increase. This is a significant reduction from last year of 12%, which illustrated to you last week when we made the crease, or pardon me, the last meeting, when we presented material, significant reduction is found due to inflation. The 4.5 rate continues to be a little bit higher than what we've normally seen, but that is constituted because of fuel prices. And that's what we're seeing. Remember that North Lincoln hauls a long way from their area in North County and has to come all the way around into Coffin View, into Benton County because of the changes and closures of other landfills that we have used over the decades. With that, the recommendation is to approve the increase.
Any questions from commissioners?
None.
Not really.
Yeah, I think the presentation part of this needs to be exposed for the end of the day. Gosh, the questions answered there, so. Discussion or time for a motion?
I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the proposed 2023 rate increase for North Lincoln Cemetery Service.
Second motion.
Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, discussion information, which we could act on if we wanted to. First up is the staff report about approval of amendment for an AARP and American Rescue Plan Act allocation.
Jim Johnson County Administrator. Tony Campa, Community Justice Director. What you have before you today is a question regarding the approval of an amendment of a previous AARP American Rescue Plan Act allocation. Question before you is should the commission approve the amendment of the American Rescue Plan Act allocation use on improvements of the Tides housing units? I'll let Mr. Campa, Director Campa, go back through this. But you have before you, just quickly in the staff report, the overview, and then you have two attachments. The first attachment is a memorandum from our county building official, John Rodriguez, who talks about the issues associated with why this is being requested of the commission. And then attachment B, which is a response from our facilities manager, Michael Cobb, who identifies what the individualized costs are, the total cost as it pertains to that. And I will turn it over to Director Campa to explain the rationale behind all of this. We have housing for our homeless population in our county, and we have some transitional housing that is in need of structural improvements to be able to get it up to code in order for, you know, to be free of safety and hazard issues. And that's really what this is for, is to be able to ship that money to be able to deal with those structural and safety concerns of the building.
Yes, in a nutshell, we're reviewing proposals. It was already allocated to adult rural probation for a different project. And reallocating our home money to state within probation that go towards fixes to afford wellness essentially.
Correct, and it's within the guidelines of the treasury, yes, the RP, so we are well within bounds of doing this.
I think it's pretty, it seems pretty straightforward to me, and it's there, the requirements, which I believe it does. Instead of starting something new, I feel like investing in the buildings we already have and making sure that those meet. You know, building safety, though, the stuff, because of the residents, and that is highly important, so. Questions from either commissioner?
I did talk to my colleague about facilities, and, you know, I trust that he's an expert in this kind of work. It is disappointing. I don't want to pull off a piece of siding and go, oh. So I think it's very prudent to address it. It sounds like it's a good thing to do, so great.
I may now ask County Council, which jumped in on this too. Historically, these buildings were acquired and purchased. Now, the siding on the buildings was Louisiana Pacific, produced by Louisiana Pacific. Unfortunately, and we knew this, eyes wide open, this was acquired and the property was subsequently discounted in the acquisition price, am I correct, Council?
Daniel County Counsel. There you go.
There you go.
Kristen Yelk County Counsel. That's correct, Administrator Johnson. And so we did give them this, media decided to be replaced on property owner. It was acknowledged after an inspection.
So question is, in fact, related to that. Sure. So were we just talking about there the original two Tides houses or one of the SIPs in Lake Ridge was?
Also, it would be able to address all the buildings that we come. Yeah, right. It understands just two houses.
Yeah, this is a plan for all four, but all four end up having Louisiana Pacific siding. That's what I'm not.
Just the two, the original Harvey.
Okay, okay.
Retro่อน.
Yeah. I would go along with you, Madam Chair, on the points you've already made, that I think it's important that we protect this investment, and once more, this is further evidence. We do desperately need to develop a comprehensive facilities inspection and maintenance plan. Be a little more proactive.
Correct, absolutely.
This kind of shows that, I think.
Life on the coast.
Commissioner Miller, anything else from you? Yeah, the only other question, which we don't have to give them through the day, but I think the estimates by our facilities manager were overall was already allocated for this in ARPA. So obviously, there is a shortfall there, and so, you know, maybe that's the discussion one other time. There's some, this doesn't totally get us there. It gets us close, but not all the repairs.
And again, they are estimates, so we don't know quite sure exactly how much it's going to be. But we are going to address it based on our priorities, based on safety and hazards, and we'll make sure we do that. And once we get to that point, we still need additional funding depending on the severity. We'll be able to allocate or move money from other areas that we need to address.
Great. This was on discussion information. We can act on that if we want to. I think we should, just because the weather's going to start turning here. And I think that if we can start getting some of this work done now, that would probably be good, or work supplies, or whatever. So, Commissioner's okay with possibly making a motion and bringing it in?
Definitely.
Yes. Yes, I would move. If we move forward and make the necessary errors, utilize funding in ARPA to do so.
I'll second the motion.
That's advice, County Council. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, next up is staff report of VOCD and American Rescue Plan Act allocations. And it's Administrator Johnson.
Thank you. Within the context of this, there were several items that we needed to do housekeeping on relative to your approval of the allocation. There were several items that we needed to do housekeeping on relative to your, uh, approval of the allocation. And within the context of this, uh, I ask you to turn to attachment A of the staff report. And highlighted for you are those areas, uh, or allocations, uh, where I changed it in May. For, for example, under emergency preparedness, um, there was a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that was reallocated for the purposes of emergency preparedness. For the departments here on the campus, on the county's main camps. Um, and so, uh, that was a re, a reallocation of a hundred thousand dollars from the total. Moving on to page two, under services to disproportionately impacted communities. We just went through the reallocation from what was the Voyager Program, um, to the Tides Housing Project. So that one is completed based upon your action. And then the nonprofit support allocations, uh, is at three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. And so that concludes, uh, and this is then all the updated information. I'd like to thank, uh, Chanel Birch for hurrying all, um, in, in making sure that we have. The latest update status report for you, uh, as in, uh, the end of August, basically. Of, uh, the actions on all of this. And based upon that, it looks like we're headed towards where we need to be as it, as it pertains to the requirements of. Dispersment and getting under contract accordingly with the, uh. A R P A's lines. I'll take any questions if you have them.
Yeah, thank you, Administrator Johnson. One question I have is about the merchants and preparedness money with the hundred K, um. And I think I don't have a staff report stating right in front of me, but I think the way I read that, that we were, um, changing that or tweak, tweaking that rather. To make it just for this campus and I guess I, I don't want it to be just for this campus.
Really, oh.
We do, we do have other county facilities, like the public works building or parks that I could foresee once, but maybe there's. Resources we want to spend on some of our other county facilities, we will have a large people, so.
Mister Johnson, you just get general county buildings and facilities.
Yeah, I think that would be fun, yeah.
Now, may I, I, I gotta go one step further. I, I've got, is this on? Any purchase of, of, of rolling stock and or facilities? Or is this just, um. An acquisition of emergency materials such as bandages and. Uh, beverages or water and. Uh, you know where I'm going with this. I'm, I'm trying to, trying to ascertain. So for instance, would we buy or would you buy, yeah, would you buy a trailer, an emergency trailer? Would you buy?
You could potentially, I mean, like, we don't necessarily have room for a trailer at courthouse, but like a county park might have room for. Conex containers and like that to put the supplies in. Um, I think one of the projects is to update all of the go-bags and bottom pools many years ago that now are expired.
Yeah.
Um, and those stolen counting cars, those are from employees that may not be at the courthouse. They might be more isolated somewhere else or at some local city or at one of our health clinics.
So would you like that to be the number one priority for us, the priority is getting those go-bags? That first taken care of?
I think that's the first thing we're already working on, uh, to need the capitol to work in our office, already taking a. Survey of all departments of how many bags we are missing, how many bags have water or food that has been. Um, expired or other things that might with time be missing out of the days, like the cracked helmets or. You know, the gloves were missing or whatever, so she's working on getting, um, that list. Uh, I think there's also some, um, ideas from the sheriff's on this as well on that, but the first thing we'll do is get those go-bags restocked. And it's kind of already in motion.
So, uh, would, would you direct me to, uh, make sure that we get the. Reconciliation of how much that might be before we embark on. The next step, so that you get the, the, the number one priority filled and we're not running up against, oh, oh. We overspent and we didn't have enough of what we wanted.
I don't think if we had to purchase all bright new go-bags for every employee, we would not reach a hundred K. Um, but yes, I could do that.
Okay.
I think in the next week or so, it's to be the house of the staff and everybody will come and, uh, we'll, yeah.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
Um, I don't have any other questions on this. Commissioner Miller, questions?
I do not.
I do not.
Thanks, um, I feel like maybe this one, maybe a few things to, I need to tweak or talk about, and we'll bring this one back. Um, on our decision to action next, finally, celebration.
Alright, that's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. Alright, next up, under reports, uh, on the agenda, it was Commissioner Hall report on homeless services, but I also received two memos. Uh, Commissioner Miller, uh, Miller wrote on, um. Forestland Trust counties as well as the spray issues, so I think we have two commissioner reports and I have a couple of the spray things, so. Let's start with Commissioner Hall report on homeless services.
Alright, are you ready, Dan?
Yes, Commissioner.
Well, this is. In part, in response to and maybe in parallel to the governor's executive order earlier this year. On homeless service funding, as well as our ongoing work with our House Bill forty-one twenty-three committee. About to deliver the draft of our comprehensive five-year plan. As well as the opening of the county's own sheltering operation, uh, in a few weeks. So, slide please. So, uh, continuum of care, this is something, uh. I guess new to this conversation. We all know about the point and time count and how it is driving funding. Both at the federal level and for the first time at the state level for homeless services. H M I S is short for Homeless Management Information System, which is. Preferred by the federal government and state governments for entering client data. To do essentially track, uh, our progress in addressing homelessness, but, uh. You know, there is some resistance because I've talked to a number of people who tell me it is a very flunky and time-consuming. Uh, tool. Slide please. Alright, as we remember, Governor Kotek issued her order in January of two thousand twenty-three. The original order excluded twenty-six rural counties, including Lincoln County. But the legislature at the initiative of Representative Gonberg and others, uh. Passed a separate bill to fund, uh, provide the emergency funding to the twenty-six counties. That make up the balance of state continuum of care. And extra dollars are welcome, but I think we all know that, um. That it's only a drop in the bucket of being next. Uh, the rural Oregon Continuum of Care wa- was established to serve areas of the state, not part of a single county or regional. Continuum of Care. This happened in the mid nineteen nineties when HUD persuaded Congress. To pass legislation establishing these continuums. So, what does it cost us? Slide please. At a recent meeting in Corvallis where we looked at, uh. The possibility and the decision was made to at least start in the process. Of withdrawing from the rural continuum and forming our own. Jimmy Jones, who's the director of Mid Valley Continuum of Care, said, had we been our own C O C in January. We would have received ten million dollars. Instead, what we ended up with is three million for the three counties. Okay, a little bit more. Next slide please. As I said, this was established. By Congress and HUD in nineteen ninety-four. They can be anywhere from a single city to an entire state. Regional model is very common. And as we know again, that, uh, inadequate pit count kept us out of contention for the governor's first order. We applied, but we were not approved. So, next slide please. Marion and Polk counties do offer a model here. Now, interestingly enough, they operated with their own continuum. Until the year two thousand eleven. They joined the rural continuum from two thousand eleven to nineteen, but in two thousand nineteen decided. They needed to reestablish their own continuum, driven by homelessness, reduction in resources, growing public awareness. Next slide please. Now, interestingly enough, you know, since. Polk and Marion have already, uh. Traveled this path, hopefully it can apply to us. You know, the thing is HUD doesn't even have a formal process for starting a new continuum of care. But what they did in the valley was, uh. Collect a large number of resolutions and support letters. You know, not only from local governments, but service partners. Uh, the new continuum is called the Midland Valley Homeless Alliance. Next slide please. So, how they can do it? Well, look at these numbers. They almost quadrupled participation in M H I, H M I S. Brands ranging from fifteen thousand dollars to five and a half million. Uh, really in just two years, it's an impressive record. Next slide please, but I've got to emphasize, if we go this path, that very well may not be our, uh. Are, we may not see those kinds of results that, uh, you know, they've got in the state capital, set in large city of the state. But at least it shows some potential. Next slide please. Okay. Again, I want to emphasize, I mentioned this earlier, but I think it really needs to be emphasized. Governor Kotek's administration has decided that homeless funding is going to be funded through four channels. Tribes, community action agencies, public housing authorities and continuums of care. This is the first time in history that state, states using continuums as a funding mechanism. As somebody at our planning meeting said, this is a game-changing moment. Next please. So. What is the catch? Any participating government entities would have to put up ongoing operating expenses for a new continuum. One option that, uh, they've done in Marion Polk is everybody, uh. Every service provider, every governmental entity that's interested has a seat at the table, but to. Gain voting status, you need to make a minimum annual dues payment. Uh, another thing that this new organization could set operational metrics and goals for funding recipients. Example, do we require everybody receiving above a certain amount of money to have audit books? And, uh. Next slide please. Questions? I will say, let me try and anticipate a couple of questions. What's the timeline on this and how much? And I have to say, I don't have those at this point. Cause the talk, the discussion is just in the very beginning stage, but, uh. Wanted to get it on your radar.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any questions right now?
Yeah, the question I do have is kind of several senses, you know, we are into this, so are there other counties? I think you said Benton maybe, or others are looking at.
Yeah, Benton, man, or, yes, exactly. The idea, well, the idea is we. At least the post, this point is, we would have a tri-county continuum.
I see.
Yes, some benefits of. Being in a regional unit, uh, spreading out the costs, but hopefully small enough that we can speak with our own voice.
Um, thank you for your, yeah, rest of the question.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just, uh, a question for Commissioner Hall. Um, you know, been in this domain for, for a while now. Um, you know, are you hopeful that Tri-County can work for us? Sometimes we feel like it doesn't serve us, that it should generally work.
I think, I think at least in theory, it could and should work with us. We've got some. Very strong voices on our behalf, you know, just one of several who comes to mind is Karen Mark Rockwell. Director of the Housing Authority, but there are other advocates that I think, uh. As long as, as long as we've got people at the table advocating for our interests, I think we'd be up there. Ruth is in the demonstration.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. So still under reports, Commissioner Miller, did you want to make a report on either your, your, or the Black Act of the Month?
Well, let's start with, um, Forest Trust Land Advisory Committee. Um, you know, I'm gonna provide a little, maybe extra detail than you might need, uh, to identify the community who might be watching. Um, that, you know, starting in January, I attended our Forest Trust Land Advisory Committee meetings. Um, and, um, it's been a, a learning process, um. We receive state, uh, funds from timber harvests, uh, that happen in Lincoln County and as well as other counties across the state. Um, we receive much less than some of our cohorts, certainly. Um, but in regard to this, you know, my participation in these committee meetings and. Some criticisms you might hear, and, and I think, uh. They might be largely true, we really have a voice and how the board of forestry is gonna shape its forestry practices. And, and I would say, I, I really do question sometimes and share the frustration. Well, commissioners, that it's really just informational, 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 that we really have. Uh, any agency. Uh, now, that being said, uh, today and tomorrow, I'll be, um. Dividing my toe into really very full days of board of forestry meetings. Um, and just to keep tabs on what's going on, but, you know, I would say. The summary is, is that. Forest Management Plan is specifically within that, the habitat conservation plans are. Are due to be implemented and, uh, it doesn't seem like, uh. Maybe we have a whole lot of agency there, but what could result in, and it's, um, you know, reducing the funds we receive. Now, my preliminary, um. Numbers that I have, Administrator Johnson and I, and we'll be sure to peel back the onion on this. We look at two thousand twenty-two, we received sixty thousand dollars to our general fund. Administrator Johnson and I were wondering how accurate is that? Um, A O C will be providing us, uh, a written detail of a history. And then also projections about, you know, those dollars that come to us, so I can give you firm numbers. But I just, you know, when you look at what's in the packet, you'll find, um, packet materials for. These border forestry meetings, as well as two presentations that I've received over the last month. In regard to these, uh, habitat conservation plans that are coming down the pipeline, so all that information is there for you. Uh, an additional meeting, um, is still T V D. It's gonna come from the governor's office to A O C, to us. Uh, that if we do have reduced revenues as a result of the habitat conservation plans. Uh, then the governor might, uh, either temporarily or for a number of years. Um, substantiate those dollars to counties. It's still in the works. Uh, we don't know how this is all gonna come out in the wash ultimately, but I just wanted you to have the resources. Um, so you're just aware of some communities where, so it's really unfolding. Um, now personally, uh, I'm gonna provide testimony myself, uh, tomorrow. There was really a narrow, narrow band of opportunities for the public at large, just to advocate for. Um, uh, the strongest environmental protections, um, than I see that are, that are offered, um. And again, it's just like, there's, there's so many algorithms and details to all of this, but. Just wanted you to have the resources as I'm representing us in these conversations, but. Actually, I would say there's some frustration. Some counties can be great, you know. Thankfully, it's, it's not, um, as much of an impact, but for us, thanks to trust county. Any questions on that and what's in the?
I have a, go ahead, Commissioner.
No, go ahead, Dan.
I don't have so much of a question, it's more of a comment, and I, I'm more of a, I think Commissioner, a lot of there's other counties that find, and it would probably be hit harder than us. You know, and it means everything, but we're seeing the county that can probably get through a sixty thousand dollar budget shortfall, so, you know, we're not. Like maybe our neighbors, but would be, you know, very difficult for them. But I guess the one thing I would say, I'm trying to get a better, um, algorithm of, of how this might impact our budgets, I think, um. Projecting how well it's important, we'd much rather know ahead of time to be hit with it, you know, as a surprise. Um. So we only had sixty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two, I think the important. so we only had sixty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two. I think the important thing to kind of look at here and maybe take out some negative from AOC is it's not so much just the money coming into our bank account. Sales are made every year, but you have, I think it's twelve or, no, I think it's twenty-four, thirty-six months. If I'm wrong, some of the fact check needs to actually make that cut and sell that timber once, um, you have that contracted place. And so it's maybe not just looking at the money coming into our account any given year, but the sales that AOC makes. Because they may make a sale in twenty twenty-two, but we don't actually see that revenue in another county until twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, and so I, I think it's also kind of looking at that sale piece, not just the money coming in, because that sale piece is potentially going to change with whatever HCP is, um, chosen. And I think that will be a better indication of how we need to register our budget to kind of deal with it.
Yeah, well, you really have been, you know, had their, too, the complexity of this and projecting ahead as well.
Yeah.
And trying to get a handle on it. And that's going to be, uh, part of the complexity of the conversations with the Governor's Office as well. How well can we even project ahead with its impacts like these? So, you know, we'll do our best between, you know, um, our forestry partners, um, that serve us, um, AOC, um, and then also working with Administrator Johnson, just weave in five of those things. So when C come into you is definitely this is more detailed, but yeah, some of it would be some predictive information.
Yes. And, um, thank you for taking this from me. This is a lot of, every time I listen, you took out my play. I probably a much better job than I did with this, so thank you for that.
Yeah, and I apologize for the midnight oil on this last, yesterday, it was a meeting. You know, I would prefer to have this to you more in advance, but thankfully I don't think there is really an impact to be made in this situation now. And I'll further try to still.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, I think this rolls over, uh, a little bit, uh, into aerial spray. Um, upfront, so grateful to the Public Information Officer, Ken Litt. Um, he's just been doing an excellent job as I, you know, represent our interests and this, um, spray operation is due, uh, at some point in Beaver Creek in September. I would say, um, it's just to kind of cut through the chase. Um, the operator has, appears to have, you know, put in a, well, has put in a new application uh, for backpack as opposed to hella complicated aerial spray. The, the other application still exists. There's no way to rescind it, uncorrect, Ken. Um, so while we trust that this will be a backpack spray operation, you know, and love more for the details from the consultant, from the owner themselves, if they're certainly going to do backpack spray. Um, again, you've got the, uh, memorandum here, but I think, um, one of the asks I have of you and any questions that you have is that I think we might possibly have the blessings to put digital road signs in the Beaver Creek area. Um, also, any way that we might improve the notifications for the community, the threat of the sea or some of the tools that we have. Um, and then later today, we'll be in a multi-agency, I think it's not over to the public with Steel Rock Water District, because, you know, even though this has impact on the entire county, potentially when we look at spray operations in general, um, really the immediate impact is to the jurisdiction of Steel Rock Water District, which I think they're handling really really well. Uh, very professionally, and they're of course concerned for safe drinking, and they're doing an excellent job. We're really there in support for them. Um, but for example, this meeting today, I think we will get some indication of how all these agencies are working in our interests or serving each other. These, how silent are they? I'm, I'm very used to seeing on how they're approaching this and collecting this, which is these agencies. And any thoughts on this on, you know, the best thing?
No question.
These two, you guys, any thoughts? Questions?
Uh, just taking some notes here, there's a couple of things I have, a little point two here, about page one. Can enhance the notifications of spray operations. I look through the firms, like, you know, it's their process.
Yeah.
I did have a conversation with Sheriff Platters on CNN's from today about possibly using a cover bridge. Uh, but there was some issues there with doing that. What else has said that other municipalities like Steel Rock Water District generally has access to those types of things? So, since you kind of are the lead in this, I'm going to say I had a conversation with him that you might want to follow up on. An additional conversation with you on what that policy is and, um, also what Steel Water District may be able to do with these cover bridges as well.
And just a few comments, um, twenty calls to Kristine O. So, um, and that would be how I would follow up, is that they are in their own, you know, independent legal jurisdiction. Um, if we're going to start using the signs, uh, so I signed up also for the first notifications.
Oh, yeah.
And this is just one operation out of many that I think you know situations for. So I would caution about consistency. Are we going to start using the signs to notice on increasing those spray operations? Because we're probably going to have to run more signs.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and it does too. So I would, I think there's more, more of the needs to be done on how we are using our emergency system and if that's appropriate to use it.
Agreed. Yeah, Councilor Yu, I think makes a good point, not just on this, but, you know, a lot of these things. We want to be good stewards of the community, where we have the capacity to follow through with these things consistently. Um, you know, even on the digital sign placement, and where does it begin and end? We want to take care of our community, no doubt, but so we might be over committing ourselves. So, Councilor Yu, I feel like what you're saying too is maybe we better, um, work through some more details before we may buy, you know, things like suddenly using um, Lincoln alerts for these and then whatever types of communications.
Um, actually, can I continue online?
Yeah, sorry. Yes.
Okay. Um, so I, yeah, I had some similar questions that Miss Yu brought up. Um, I really said, said this is totally, you know, a mixed comment, but um, also, since we have um, since we have gotten those, uh, signs, we have found it, um, difficult to find places that we really can do with them. A lot of times ODAD doesn't actually allow us to put them in there right away, which is super frustrating.
Yeah.
Anyways, that's, like I said, that's an end of the day thing, but some other thing about, not just on this issue where we go to place them tonight, so we're just starting with places we would be willing to allow to put them. And the other thing I would say is, um, second page, goal point three, just utilization of any well water repair program right now.
Yes.
Um, I guess if you are on Water District or Citizen or whoever is looking at that, um, please send them to myself and our grants manager, that is one of my programs they have. Probably the best first at how we can actually use, um, that money. So, you're taking a lead on kind of spray. I will take a lead on that particular goal point. It's kind of, one of my things.
Yeah, and I would say too, for those of us watching this, I have a better, right? I'm just putting this out there. Um, I don't think any guarantees in anything in particular, just some, some ideas.
Uh, no questions, a few comments. First, uh, kudos to you, Commissioner Miller, and also to Ken Blip, our PIO, for the great work you've been doing on this so far. I think we are plugged in as a supporting partner to hopefully carry the message of the people at the Water District, uh, that, uh, this is not okay and, uh, we want to do everything we can to join others in elevating their concerns, but at the same time, even though we've already discussed it here, I think it's important to emphasize again, you know, there was a letter to the editor in last Friday's paper telling people to contact us about the spraying. And some constituents have copied this in on their correspondence with the state, and that's great, but, uh, at the same time, you know, we don't have any direct or indirect legal authority to stop this or change the, essentially it's the court of public opinion that's working right now, I think.
Yeah, and to Councilor Yu's point, um, and Ken pulled, uh, I think all the notifications in the last year.
Twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen, you know, that's, there's a lot. So this is just, um, a part of how our forests are managed in Lincoln County and Oregon. Um, so a lot of that activity, and then we've also looked at the dashboards and Steel Rock Water District testing and open in the community. You can look at these chemicals that are being tested for limeresides and, you know, there's a no detect rule. So, as far as safety is concerned, at this point especially, um, the, you know, it is within the thresholds of water safety of the community. Could that change? And Steel Rock Water District is monitoring that. Um, so, you know, we all might be careful to, to worry and get worried well about this issue. So, it's, it's easy to go down a rabbit hole. Um, but certainly we're going to keep, keep our eyes on the community.
In, in the chaos, Mr. Miller, any reports?
Oh.
For me, yeah. Well, I feel like the two of you would be ashamed here. You have nice fancy forests and power points. I have like several notes on the picture. Um, I'll try, I'll try to outdo you both at a different meeting. Um, I just wanted to say that this, uh, week, or the last week, um, March, the three-year anniversary of the Echo Mountain Fire in Franklin County, where three murder homes um, destroyed. So I just wanted to remind everybody of that three years ago. I know Commissioner Miller was certainly with us, and Commissioner Hall was certainly with us. Councilor Yu was with us, Ken was not with us, that certainly covered the story. And there, uh, Public Works Director Roy Kenyon was with us, Taryn as well, and many other county employees. So I just wanted to recognize not just our survivors and people still recovering, but also all of our county employees that were integral in that process. Um, and I will work on sometime in the month of Sep- September, you know, putting together a nice report on uh, where we're at in recovery and where we're still having gaps and some of the projects that are still happening. I feel like, uh, if you're not in it, it's easy to think that it's like all done, right? You're like, well, yes, we moved on, but we certainly haven't. Um, there's still a lot of projects, um, happening. There's still a lot of people that are unhoused and don't have permanent housing. Um, but there is a lot of projects right now in Dokes and Lincoln County that will provide a lot of that housing. They're just not, um, done yet. So, I will work on putting something together in the next thirty days or so to really getting a news, and then putting on more recovery. Some of the resources that are still being developed, I just wanted to highlight that it was three years, um, last week that we had that fire.
Oh, my gosh. Uh, you know, Madam Chair, it may be, uh, your comments may be think back to something Ken Murphy, former State Emergency Management Director, who was working for Lincoln City at the time of the fire, said to me, and it proved, it's proving to be accurate, think of recovery from an event this scale magnitude as being a two to ten-year process.
Yeah, feels, feels like that.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure I want to say that I met with the grants administrator just to understand more about, you know, kind of what she's been doing. And I was, wow, you know, wow, wow. And I know you don't really, um, maybe broadcast your, your, your victories and your progress. I mean, I see your heads down, you're writing, working on this stuff, but I think an update would be great. I think people might be surprised at how many dollars you've all facilitated, really, really through your all the muscle coming to this community, and it's really significant. I'm super grateful.
Yeah, thank you. It's been a long process. It's been a long process and, um, a lot of money brought in, and thanks to our finance department who set a deal with all the money, which hasn't always been, wasn't further than to do. Um, Tim just pointed out to me the other day that I haven't really realized this, but he said, you know, he brought in more money than the general fund um, in France. And, you know, oh my God, I wonder if finance sometimes is annoying with me because you want money managed. So, anyways, we'll get into all of that at a later time, but just really wanted to point out, it's been great. So, thanks for that.
Wow.
All right, moving on to public comments. First, we're going to look at online written public comment that was taken, the cutoff for that to go on. Any agenda is involved in the Navy Force. This is stuff that came in over the last couple of weeks and into yesterday.
Sure, it's, uh, largely concerning aerial spraying, STRs, and there was a few isolated comments, uh, about things like property taxes and water into the bill.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're going to move to, um, in-person, online public comments. So if you happen to be watching the meeting with us, um, in live mode, I want to provide a public comment, raise your virtual hands, say we just have employees um, in there. Everybody, all right, do we have any in-person public comments?
No one has signed up. Does anybody want to speak to us on something?
Yeah, okay. All right, um, well, in that case, any other, anything else from either commissioners or staff? No? Okay, well, we're going to go ahead and adjourn our meeting then, and our next meeting is, uh, Wednesday, September twentieth, uh, in this room and, um,